I'm going to call the Wednesday, September 21st, 2022 meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order, and we have a roll call, please.
Joanne Chester?
Here.
Matt Cho. Ashley McLaughlin. Adam Roche?
Here.
Nancy Utebman. Charles Warrenbrun?
Here.
Harvey Welsh?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? This time then we'll take up the minutes, because everyone received the minutes from the August 10th, 2022 special meeting, had a chance to review those.
I move that we accept the minutes as drafted for the August 10th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Adam Roche?
Yes.
Charles Warrenbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welsh?
Yes, the minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
No.
All right, at this time, ask anybody that wishes to be heard tonight to stand and be sworn. You swear affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief. Thank you. At this time then, we would call for hearing, the continued public hearings. First, ZBA 2022-A-01, a request by Octumar, Octapharma Plasma Inc. for an appeal of an interpretation of the Urbana zoning ordinance made by the zoning administrator. This case has been withdrawn by the applicant. So at this time, we would call for hearing ZBA-2022-major-05, a request by Stephen and Deborah Woodward for a major variance to allow a 40-foot-by-100-foot accessory structure at 2003 Airport Road in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Do we have a staff report?
Yes.
Proceed.
Thank you, Harvey. This is a request by Stephen and Deborah Woodward for a major variance to allow a 4,000-square-foot garage at 2003 Airport Road in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. On August 11th, the zoning board of appeals considered a major variance to allow a 40-foot-by-100-foot Morton-style garage at 2003 Airport Road. At the meeting, the zoning board of appeals discussed the proposed garage size and setback from the east property line. Ms. Chester suggested that the garage be set back at least 10 feet from the east property line. There have been some changes since our last meeting, and I'll run through those tonight. This is the revised site plan that was attached as Exhibit F. The applicants have since revised their request. They now propose a 50-foot-by-80-foot, still 4,000-square-foot garage in the rear yard connected to the existing shed, which would be 10 feet from the east property line. The site plan has been revised to show the 10-foot setback and now linear east-west orientation of the garage. So at the last meeting, it was shown on kind of a diagonal. Since then, it's been shifted. Now it'll be linear between the two property lines and 10 feet from the east property line. If the zoning board feels that screening should be required on the east side of the lot, the applicants are amenable to a condition to that effect. Staff recommends that any condition should be for landscape screening as opposed to fence screening, just because it would be more visually appealing and it wouldn't run the entire side property line length. The zoning board of appeals also discussed the potential issue of increased stormwater runoff. The proposed garage would have gutters that would be oriented north-south and direct stormwater runoff south into the open grassland. If the zoning board of appeals has additional concerns about increased stormwater runoff, a condition could be applied to the variance to require the city engineer to review the garage plans during the building permit plan review. Charles also called me yesterday to discuss a couple measurements, so I wanted to show them on this graphic. The distance from the proposed garage to the house would be approximately 100 feet, and that's measured to the deck that's shown in this photo. The distance from the existing shed to the west property line would be about 40 feet. And to reiterate what was stated at the last meeting, but not included in the original staff report, the lot is 165 feet wide. The proposed garage would be subject to the city's building permit and plan review process for new construction. The building must meet all other regulations of the zoning ordinance and building code requirements for the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The maximum height for an accessory structure in a residential district is 15 feet, measured to the midpoint of the pitched roof. The proposed garage and house are under the allowable floor area ratio for the zoning district, and the property as a whole well exceeds the required open space ratio for the zoning district. The use would be incidental to the principal use and structure of a single-family house. The garage would be used solely to store the owner's collectible cars. No commercial or industrial activity would be permitted on the property as it is zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and the use would be required to comply with all requirements of the city code, including the noise ordinance. This is a photo provided by the applicants of what the design of the building could look And our recommendation has not changed since the first meeting. The zoning board of appeals requested that the applicants provide a revised site plan showing the increased setback from the property lines for the proposed garage and a photo of the proposed building type. Staff and the applicants have provided documentation to that end, and it was included in your packet. The Woodwards are here to make a statement and answer any questions, and I can take any questions for staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Are there questions for staff? All right. Yes, go ahead, Joanne.
Is there something that's in the code that has to do with the size of your house and the size of your garage?
That would be the zoning ordinance has controls over that. The city code, I referenced that for, more for noise, yeah, because that was something that was brought up in the previous meeting. You know, engines revving, things like that. All activity on the lot would need to comply with the city code for the city of Urbana, and all development would be subject to the zoning ordinance regulations.
Can you turn on your mic? Sorry. Thanks.
But this garage is 4,000 square feet?
Correct.
Surface area of floor area?
Footprint, yeah.
Footprint. And how many, how much does the house have?
The house, I believe, is about 2,300 square feet. And when we take that into consideration for zoning ordinance regulation, it's done on floor area ratio and open space ratio. Because this lot is so large, it doesn't come on, the development that's there now and the proposed garage don't come anywhere near the maximum floor area ratio.
You know, I just remember sometime in the past, I was thinking about, you know, like a 500-square-foot house wanted, you know. Excuse me, could you use your bike? We can't hear you.
Oh. I remember something in the past, there was something about a very small house with a very big garage.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that that was an issue.
So the maximum area for any accessory structure, regardless of how large your house is, you could have a 500-square-foot house, the maximum area for an accessory structure would be 750 square feet. But, nothing. The variance request in this case is to allow for an accessory structure that would be larger than what's allowed by the zoning ordinance. And the things that we've taken into consideration in this case are more relevant to the variance criteria than the size of the house itself or the zoning ordinance regulations for an accessory structure. The request meets the variance criteria in that it wouldn't cause a nuisance, or that staff does not believe it will cause a nuisance. There are special circumstances in this case because the lot is significantly larger than a standard single-family lot.
Are there any additional questions for staff? Thank you. Do the petitioners or applicants wish to be heard? The Woodwards?
Yes.
Yes, come forward, please.
You want me here or there?
You'd probably be more comfortable sitting. Why don't you sit?
Can you write, sign in right here?
Yes.
And Deb, I think I turned that mic off.
There we go. All right, can you hear me okay? Okay.
Can you, can you talk into the microphone? I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Sure. I know, it's crazy. I'm Deborah Woodward. I'm the owner of 2003 Airport Road. And just out of respect to the committee, prior to this meeting, I reviewed last, the last meeting, listened to the committee's comments. In respect to the committee's time, I prepared a few comments to address those concerns. So one is, in accordance with your recommendation, it was recommended by the committee that we go from a five-foot setback to a 10-foot setback, and that's what we did in the new diagram. And as the last meeting discussion about what the building would look like, so we provided that picture. In this meeting's minutes is we showed the design. A photo with potential design of the building was not available without the concrete pad, so we would not have that concrete pad on the side, so I just wanted to state that. And we're looking to add a steel or wood to determine what is most cost-effective and aesthetically pleasing within the confines of the variance requested. One of the other things is, I'd like to put into evidence, there is a vision of what it would look like inside, so I have pictures to put into evidence of what it would look like to kind of explain how we're talking about storage of cars. So wait until those are handed out. So as you can see, to minimize the footprint to store cars, we have a stacker that will require the requested height. This picture represents a garage, not ours, but one that we want to do similar as far as the inside of the building. Currently, our house garage is 20 by 24, and so part of this building will be storing of our daily driver vehicles, because the garage on site is very small. The orientation of the building was designed to enhance maximum presentation of the property while maintaining the existing trees, because we liked how all the trees, and we didn't want to disrupt that view. And also for security reasons, because the high value of the vehicles that will be inside, we wanted to have line of sight from the house to see and preserve the green space in that far back lot. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that this property was there prior to the two subdivisions being developed, and we were instructed and told that it's not part of either side's development or their rules and regulations. Any questions?
Go ahead, Charles.
So your diagram, you're going to have three doors?
Yes.
And the side door is not going to be there?
The side door will be next to the other structure that's currently there.
Right, with this building a butt up against it?
Yeah. But the concrete pad that's showing in that picture, I had to find a picture, which would be towards the neighbor's property, would not be there.
The west side wouldn't be there, but the north side would be there.
Yeah, to approach the doors.
Right. Can you explain to me how you're going to get the drainage to the south? I just didn't quite understand that at all.
Yeah, well, we're going to work with our contractors so that where it drains will drain to the back land and to the front, and to do, where you do the underground pop-up, I don't know if they call valves, but where they take the line and drain it underneath the ground and pop up, so it'll be draining towards our property on both sides.
Okay. I don't, still don't understand that. You've got your gutters on the south and your gutters on the north.
Right, I'm sorry.
The south I can see.
That's my husband. Can he come up at this time?
Well, you finish and then...
Okay.
Yeah, I could ask that to him. I spoke.
The term was French drain. Hold on.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So did you ever consider knocking down the existing shed stable and centering this now that you have it oriented the way you've changed the orientation?
By doing that, based on this variance, we wouldn't, we would lose that space, and based on the size of the garage, we're looking to put like the lawn mowers and stuff like that into that structure.
And is there any possibility you can think about switching the orientation, so the 50-foot is on the north side and on the south side, so run this way instead of this way?
Yeah, if we were to do that, it would also increase in costs and utilities in running them out there. And also, we wanted to preserve that back lot area. That is what was some of the concern of what people were looking at from their backyards and what they like to see. So we were trying to find a compromise across the board that would work.
I guess that's it for right now.
How old and what is the condition of the shed, you know, the horse shed? That's where the horse was, right?
Right. So it's, it's, the structure's still intact. It's going to need some work in insulation and work to get it up to what I call good structure. But it is intact and it has a concrete floor.
And how big is it?
It is 20 by 30.
Oh, okay, so it's pretty big.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking. Yeah, I would, you know, I did realize that you have changed the dimensions to 40 by 80, no, 50 by 80 rather than 40 by 100.
Mm-hmm.
And I know I was the person who brought up 10 feet, but boy, I sure would rather see it centered in the middle. Because it's pretty, it's still really pretty close to their back. It would just be better.
But from what I understand, per code, you only have to be five feet for any structure, correct? And so we're looking at 10 feet to allow additional.
Well, that is true, but this is a major, major variance, so it's different.
And I'd like to kind of remind, it's 165 by 660 long, the property size.
Right, but you don't want to use that other part for this. You don't want to put that back there in the middle.
Because then it'd be out of, kind of out of sight, because there's some trees at that area, and if we put it further back, then it'd be out of sight and we wouldn't
All right, Charles, go ahead.
On your initial application, when you filled out for the reasons for variance, you said that if we were to follow the code, we would need to attach the house to the house, which would make the house less attractive, less functional, and an eyesore, losing the backyard. I just want to point out once again that you can connect this to your house, and you don't need a variance.
Correct, but...
Go ahead. I don't want to put words in your...
No, that's okay. So the thing again is, by attaching it to the house, we would disrupt all those trees, and there's about, I don't know, six trees in that area, and we would have to knock out all of that if we go to trying to attach that, and it would aesthetically would not look as pleasant.
Any further questions? Thank you. Mr. Woodward, do you want to come forward, fill in?
I just wanted to...
Wait, don't talk to, get up here. And sign in, please.
Yes, sir. I don't have a pen. The drain, they're called French drains, so they'll come along the building and they will trench however far back it needs to. And they'll be like field tile, and it'll go back there to a pop-up, so when the pressure comes down through the drain or to the gutters, it'll go back there and it'll push this thing up and let the water go out. Because we were concerned with that, too. I don't really know how much it'll take up or if it will, but we had already talked about, and our contractor talked about, and Debbie didn't know the term French drain. And what it is, is just essentially the gutter comes down and goes into a drainage tile pipe. It's plastic, and it'll go back into the back of the property, and then when it rains hard, that'll pop up and let the water out into there. That was, I was just going to answer that question for you all, as any others, I'll... Any other question for...
I forgot to ask your wife, but do you know how high at the peak the building is going to be? Since we're looking at 15 feet, we were always wondering if it could be done at 15 feet or less, right?
Yeah, so as has been mentioned, 15 feet is measured to the midpoint of the pitched roof. I'm speculating it could be up to maybe 18 to 20 feet, depending on the pitch of the
So we don't know the pitch of this particular roof?
Well, we can't nail down anything because we can't get plans, because we don't know whether we're hooking it onto the house or not, but whatever 50 feet would dictate in bringing it down within, I mean, I'm sure they can not flatten it, but I'm sure they can bring the peak down.
If it were a flat roof, that would be measured, 15 feet would be measured to the top of the flat roof.
So the 15 feet is measured to the midpoint, and the midpoint is in the middle?
Correct.
So it could be a 30-foot at the peak.
I'm thinking that would be unlikely.
Well, theoretically.
That would push the midpoint above 15 feet.
Right.
The 30, half a 30 is 15.
But then it'd be like 15 plus.
Like, that might look like an A-frame by the time you...
It's on an angle.
All right, I get you. Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions for the petitioner? Matt? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard, in favor of the applicant? Hearing none. At this time, are there those who oppose the application that wish to be heard?
Hi. Well, my name's Greg Henningman, and I live on the eastern side of where this proposal is going in. And probably more than anybody, as I stated last time, I'm going to be the one who's personally going to be affected by it the most visually. Probably my biggest complaint about this is, is that I don't really think that a giant rectangular structure is going to fit the architectural style of this neighborhood, and if you stuck this in any neighborhood in this town, it wouldn't look right anyway. Part of the problem is, is that there's a perception that this area is on the outskirts of town, and it is not on the outskirts of town. It's in town. So that's one complaint that I have. The environmental runoff study, I don't know if that was done. It was suggested by somebody on the board the last time we were here. They said they were going to turn it over to the engineer department. My question is, was that done here? The environmental study?
No formal review by our engineer has been done yet.
Okay.
That would come after the variance was approved, if it were approved.
Okay, well, one of the subjects here was the water runoff. I can tell you from living there for 14 years, the people that designed the housing along Skyline Avenue did not take into consideration the fact that the property that this building is going to go on sits higher than the rest of the property. There has been times when it's rained so hard that the runoff from that field, I could watch it just coming up to my patio deck. Gee, is it going to get in the basement or the crawl space? I don't know. It finally didn't. Eventually, what it would do, it would go south, and I think finally the city put a drain in down there, because the guy down at the end of the street, his entire backyard was full of water. Now, I understand the thing about the French drain. Yes, it would go away from that structure. It would go south into their property and then pop up, but then where's it going to go? If that ground's too hard to accept that water, it's just going to run off, and it's just going to go further south than where my property is. But all along that stretch of land, it's higher there than it is the rest of that, and it just fills those backyards up. So that's that concern. I've been looking at these Morton-style buildings as I drive along, and some of them, you know, if you pick the right color combinations, the materials, they don't look that bad. My biggest fear is it would be pink. So, and then yesterday, a friend of mine asked me, he said, "Well, would you have bought your house if that, that building, as it exists or would exist, was there?" And I've given it a lot of thought, and I pretty much would have to say no. Now, if I ever sold my property, whoever's going to look at my house is going to walk out that back door, and they're just going to go, "Whoa, what is that?" Now, to kind of illustrate it, and I tried to be as fair here as I possibly could, but essentially, this is kind of the view from my back window. This would be my property here, and there's my patio deck. Here's the neighbors to the north. There's their security fence, chain-link fence. Here's some plants and things. Here's the brown building, and it's been mentioned many, many times. Here's the fence that borders the back properties here that would help hide all this from them. Here's their roofs here. Now, to give you an example of what, and I tried to be as fair as I could here, what 50 feet would look like. There we go. That's what I'm going to be looking at every time I look out that back window. And I don't know how old these people are. I don't know if they're going to stay there the rest of their lives, but this building is going to go nowhere. I would like to stay where I am the rest of my life, and that's what I'm going to be looking at every day for the rest of my life. And if they sell out, it's going nowhere. It's always going to be there. And if they sell out, it's going nowhere, it's always going to be there, and it's a monstrosity. So, I would apologize if I don't have the scale right here, but that's the best I could do, and that's just to kind of give you an idea. And, and as I said last time, let me ask each and every one of you, how would you like to wake up one day in this thing's ten feet off your property line? It's a wall of metal. So, I'm sorry, they bought this property thinking they could put something up here like this, but this isn't the country. We live in a developed suburb of Urbana. I live on Skyline Drive, and then there's the other, the other one on the west side. So, yep, that's, that's it, folks. And that's about all I have to say, so. Any question?
Are you twenty-seven oh three? What's your angle?
Yeah, twenty-seven oh three, yeah. So, and also, too, from the configuration, from the picture they had on there, actually, this thing would probably be sitting, eh, well, nothing like double-stick tape, it'd probably be sitting about like right there. And this would represent the ten-foot variance from the property line. A fence, if a fence was put up, even if it was a six-foot fence, it'd probably be sitting like right there. It's not going to hide it, it can't. It's, there's no possibility of hiding it. These trees here are volunteer trees from, actually from, I think from their maple trees. They grow pretty quick. That would be the solution, is to hide it. But if they didn't plant them in this ten-foot section at their trouble and expense, I would have to, and then that's going to shorten the area of my property here, which is a fairly large backyard. I would think if I sold it, maybe a family would want it, so their kids could play in the back. That's why I haven't planted any trees myself. But, so, I don't know, that's just kind of it.
Go ahead, Adam.
Yes, sir. Does your neighborhood have an HOA?
No, it doesn't. The subdivision to the west, Landis Farm does.
Okay. So, there's no, so the water mitigation is just done by the city, there's no, like, neighborhood mitigation there?
No, no.
Joanne, go ahead. Oh.
So, so on this map, we have it sitting on the property.
Mm-hmm.
But I want to know kind of where exactly it's going to be. You know, is it going to block just one person's backyard, or is it going to be?
The location, as it's shown on the site plan, is where it would be lined up to the shed, so it would, Mr. Henningman would see about, I'm going to guess, thirty-five feet of that elevation, and then the property to the north would be about fifteen.
And so, how, I don't, I don't, what is the dimension of the width of his, the frontage of his foot, his yard?
I don't have that in front of me, but I'm going to guess, how wide's your lot? Sixty-five, seventy feet?
Well, I'd say, yeah, about, about that.
Okay.
So, it'd take up a sizable chunk. I mean, it's on their property, but it would be, you know, visible to me without question.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else wanting to be heard, please come forward. Sir, sir, it'd probably be better if you sat over there with the one mic, yeah.
We had a few questions, too. Can we ask the questions?
Why don't you address them to us?
Okay.
Your questions, pull that over towards you a little bit. All right, go ahead.
We're a little bit confused about the height of the building. We're talking about it only being fifteen feet to the midpoint, and we're still confused about how high that roof is actually going to be. Do we have any idea what the pitch of the roof is going to be yet?
Could staff bring up the picture of the exhibit again?
Yeah, hang on one sec.
So, I guess the staff can answer this. My understanding is that basically you have the lower part of the slope, height of the slope, and then halfway in between is the midpoint, that would have to be fifteen feet, correct?
So, if we put the marker on it, so, this would be the very highest point, which we're estimating to be between twenty-five and thirty feet. And so, you're saying that the midpoint would be halfway up this-
Oh.
Are you saying that the wall height is going to be the top, and you're going to measure between the midpoint of that and the peak?
Correct.
How do you determine the midpoint if you don't know what the peak is?
Well, that's part of the building permit review. So, the slope on the-
So, that's part of the problem, the fact that we can't make that determination.
Do you know how tall the walls are?
I think this is being a little bit confused. If I, if I heard you correctly, it's actually from the base of the building, the, the average base of the building, and then from the midpoint of the roof, so it goes all the way up, so that the whole wall of that is included in that fifteen feet, and that's a maximum, too. So, they'd have to come back and reapply for a variance if there was anything to deviate from that.
So, am I understanding that the wall is not going to be fifteen feet tall?
Correct.
Unless it's a flat roof.
Unless it's a flat roof.
Unless it's a flat roof.
Right.
So, we're saying it, it would be at least twenty-two to twenty-five or twenty-six feet tall then, probably. As a guesstimate, since we don't know what the actual-
I'm going to, yeah, I would guess between eighteen and twenty feet, but it'll depend on the pitch of the roof.
I believe that the building that they currently have is about that height. And so, I think that the building that they're proposing is going to have to be higher than that because of the dimensions that they're saying. I mean, we're just trying to figure out what kind of, what kind of a structure we're actually looking at. You can look at the picture, and to me, that building looks pretty big. Our house, and most of houses in our area, are under twenty feet. So, that means that this building is going, in the back, is going to loom above all our houses. We already talked about that means, and for Greg especially, his property value, what is that going to do to the property values in our area?
And the people next door?
The, the people next door have the same problem. They're going to walk out to a wall. It's, you know, the quote that you had just a little while ago, that was on the, the application, that says in it that they don't want to ruin their backyard. They don't want to ruin their view. But what are they doing to the view of their neighbors? What are they doing by building this eyesore, which is what she referred to it as, in our backyards? If they attach it to their house, then it doesn't put it in our backyards, and it would put it more in the center of the lot, not way over ten feet from Greg walking out in the morning and seeing that's what's out there. You know, this large building is going to be out of place. It's going to alter the character of our neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, it's not an industrial neighborhood, it's not a farm area. It's a residential neighborhood, and this will definitely alter it. It's not our fault that they didn't do their due diligence and find out what they could and couldn't put on this land. You know, I feel the same way that most of you probably feel, that if you buy land, you should be able to do with it what you want. However, when I do with my land what I want, I would consider my neighbors. I wouldn't just say, "Well, this is what I want, and I don't care what's happening either."
Another question I had was the French drain system. He said that it's going to be going around the building, and it's going to dump out, but I didn't exactly understand, where is it going when it goes around the building? Is it going to go to the center of the back of the building and dump out in the backyard? Is it going to go on the ends next to our neighbors and dump out in the yards? Where's it going to? And that's, and he was talking about coming from the front. The stuff that's in the back, is it just going to dump off into the grass, or? I'm confused on that one, too.
So, the neighborhood, I, I think that if somebody already made the point, that the very top, the highest point in our neighborhood, is where their house is. So, all of the water comes downhill, and it comes into our backyard, and they're saying that they're going to put the downspout so that they go north and south. Well, if you have a hill like this, and you have the north downspout here, that water might come out for a little ways, but it's still going to come back. It's, you know, you can't force that water to go uphill. Gravity is going to bring it down, and that means gravity is going to bring it into our yards, which we already have a problem with.
Another comment I'd like to make is the, the average house out there is about sixteen hundred square feet, and, which means you can put two houses inside that building, you know, floor space wide. That'll fit two houses in there. And we're not opposed to them having a, a place where they can store their cars, but we just don't understand why they need one that is as large as it is and as tall as it sounds like it's going to be. And you, you asked the question about the orientation, north and south. When I looked at the Google Earth, and I had measured out distances and things like that, being in the backyard where they don't want it, I could see if they took the one center tree out, they'd have enough room to put that in between there and do it, north and south.
If they, if they orient it north and south.
And I've got a, we drive a Chevrolet Traverse, and I measured it, and if you, if you cram all of the cars in there, you could put thirty of my cars inside that building, and they say they have ten that they want to put in there. And they've still, they've already got the smaller garage, so do they want the building as tall as it is because they're going to put the lift in there? They've got the other building. Could they put the lift in the other building and use that for, you know, for the, the lift part of the garage and for working on their car? It'd still leave them a lot of room in the other areas, the thing to, to do their work and do the storage of lawnmower and things like that.
To be able to make that building not to be quite as tall. Yeah, you know, we, we just don't understand why they think it's, it's okay to just bring this big of a building into that area. And I understand, yes, that they can attach it to their house. Well, then, attach it to your house and make it look like your house, and don't ruin everything in, in our residential neighborhood. You know, that, we're just asking that either they change what they're, you know, what they're planning or hoping to do to, to kind of conform to our neighborhood, instead of just coming in and saying, "Too bad, you know, we, we didn't know that we didn't, we couldn't put this in here, and we're going to do it anyway."
We thought, too, if they had taken down the old building, they could have, it would have fit in the property better, and it would be, it would have given them more space to the, to, on both sides, so we, we wasn't so close to anybody's. But if you look at the distance that she showed on that picture a while ago, it was a hundred feet from their house to the shed, but they didn't show measurement how far that building was from this side of the shed to Greg's front door, or Greg's back door, or the other people's back door. That's, I'm sure it's less than a hundred feet. But it's out here where they don't see it as much because they've got all their nice trees, but he doesn't have any trees, and the people next door have planted some smaller trees, but it's still right there in their face, and that's what they see. It doesn't affect us as much now because they took the diagonal off. It was going to be in the back of our house, too. And since they moved it, they moved it over there, so it doesn't affect us that much. But if we look in that direction, that's what we're going to be seeing, too. Anything else?
Just the fact that, you know, the, the size of this building's about three times the size of any other houses out there, or most of the houses out there. We, we just ask that you deny the variance and, and that, that they find some other way to do that. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Is your objection to the size or the location or both?
Both. I think-
So, so, just so we're clear, in the location and the revised site plan, you would still have objection to a, a smaller building in that location?
Not so much.
It depends on the height of the building. That's one of the things that we're saying, is the fact that that building is going to loom over the other houses in the area. If they take it up by their area, then I think we're going to have less problem with runoff, because you're not going to have all that concrete. I mean, they're going to have to have concrete coming to that area. I, I don't think they're going to just, you know, drive down there on, on a rock driveway. So, that's all that concrete, it's going to flow, you know, bring water towards us. If they put it up by the house, like he said, you know, I would think that if they put it by their house, they're going to make it conform more. So, if, you know, what, we just, we just think it's, it's just so big compared to, like, their house is twenty-three hundred square feet. Their garage is going to be almost twice that, because they have the seven-hundred-foot barn, which used to be just dirt. It used to be a dirt floor. But since we have come and spoken to y'all, they have put concrete in that. They did that in the month or so that we had. So, they concreted that. So, that's going to mean, that's why they don't want to move it now. They've already gone to the expense of putting concrete in that floor that wasn't there when we were here a month ago.
Go on, Joanne.
So, let's say that they could put it somewhere that it was centered in the middle of the space. So, it was to each housing, to the houses on each side, it would be equidistant. So, it wouldn't have ten and fifty, or whatever it is.
Right.
Would that be better? More acceptable?
I think it would be. You know, as we said, it doesn't affect us as much as it did with the orientation that they've done, but we still, you know, Greg is our neighbor, and the people next to him are our neighbors, and we still want the variance denied because of the fact that, you know, neighbors should be supportive of one another.
And we don't want to be, we don't want to be bad neighbors to the new people coming in. We don't know them, we haven't gotten to know them so far, but it's just the idea that-
Yeah, you know, if they had even asked anybody in the neighborhood, you know, how they felt about it, could we have worked with them before, you know, all of this just kind of hit us in the face, then it just would have, it would have helped a lot.
But it's still really confusing to us how tall the building's actually going to be. When he showed, they showed that picture, that had pictures, cars, you know, double-stacked on the lift, then that sounds to me more than fifteen feet.
Well.
If you put the midpoint of that, and that's still going to be higher than that, I, you know, I would think you'd have to have at least eighteen feet for, be able to lift the car up high enough to work under it.
To double-stack them like that, it seems like. Our car is six feet high, so if you have a six-foot-high car, and you put another car on top, that's twelve feet, and then you have to have some space in between, you have to have some space up above. So, that's, that's why we, we have confusion about just how tall is this building going to really be.
Couldn't we get a calculation of the height?
From the, from the Africa?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
When we calculate it, we come up with the lowest- When we calculate it, we come up with the lowest it could be was twenty-three, twenty-two. And the highest it could be would be like around twenty-seven. And that's looking at like the pitch of the roof, was that six?
Yeah, the way I understand it, you measure from the top of the wall and you go out a foot. And depending on what your pitch is, like six, twelve, whatever it's gonna be, if it was a six-inch pitch and, and you look at twenty-five feet, that came out to something like twenty-seven feet tall.
Twenty-seven feet.
Twenty-seven and a half feet.
Sounds about right.
That's the way I figured it. The midpoint thing, I just found out about that in the last thing that we looked at that you guys posted. In the midterm, and it's still confusing to me, how can you tell me what the building's height's gonna be if you don't even know what the midpoint's gonna be?
Yeah, you don't know what the wall's height is.
This is what it's supposed to be, but you don't know the pitch, so you don't know how tall the building's gonna be. Go ahead, Joanne. Joanne, go on.
Could we get, figure out how tall this building's gonna be instead of speculating?
Sure.
You mean the height?
Yes. No variance is being requested for the height. So, it will be capped at fifteen feet to the midpoint. I will figure out how tall the maximum peak will be.
Yes, yeah.
This picture looks like a fairly low pitch.
Yeah.
But I don't know what that would be, but...
It's still gonna be pretty tall. Okay, thank you again. We appreciate, you know, you, you listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wants to be heard in opposition to the request? Hearing no, no one else, do the applicants wish to respond to any of the questions that were posed? Come forward, please.
And can I have Deb Bryce come up with the...
Who?
Uh, Deb Bryce, she has more of the technical information that would help.
Yeah, yeah, come on. Come forward.
So, to address a couple of things is we are working with a contractor to get some plans, preliminary plans, in case we do get the variance approved. And we talked to them and we're talking about a two-point-one-two pitch. So, that is a very low pitch. We told them about the requirements of the fifteen-foot height and they believe that they can do it within that parameters. So, we are looking at those parameters to make it happen. It's not gonna be a four or six or eight-foot pitch. It's gonna be a very low pitch, two-point-one-two. And a couple of things is I understand that change is difficult for folks in having that property where nothing's been done with it for so long. But the change does occur and someone at some point would wanna change that property when they bought it. Uh, the reason that we do not want to attach the building at this time and we wouldn't have to go through this process is that we're looking at eventually adding on to the back of the house, looking to add a first-floor bedroom. So, as we get older, we know we're not gonna be able to do the stairs. And I have an elderly mom that I'd like to have come visit us. So, we're looking at this from a long-term perspective. Let's see what else. And as was stated, we did change the design to minimize the impact to our neighbors as the couple that just came up. By reorienting, that their yard is looking into the field. So, they no longer would look at the building unless they wanted to go at a diagonal. So, we looked at the least invasive way to put the building up. And I understand it's abnormal for a lot of people to have a lot of cars, but it's just kind of a hobby of ours and that we've collected over the years. And that's why it needs to be the size that we're requesting.
And yet, some others.
Okay, I've got a couple of things I'd like to add to clarify some of the things that we heard. Let me give you first a little background about myself. I chaired the Champagne County Zoning Board of Appeals for ten years and served as a zoning board member for an additional five. So, I understand what you're going through. And I also understand that there's a lot of emotion attached to any of these types of changes. This lot that is being discussed for a potential variance is over a two-acre lot. Mr. Henigan testified that his lot and his home were small. Um, the county records show that his lot is point, point-two-one acres. It is a small lot. Those, that subdivision was built after this larger lot was divided out from the farmland. This, when this house was built, and I live in this area, there was nothing around it. So, Mr. Henigan also testified that he's in the middle of town. I will dispute that vigorously because the subdiv, his house is four houses from the Ag Two zoning district in the county. Um, the road directly to the north of him is county. It dead-ends into the Weckel Farm Field. There is a drainage swale put in by the developer along the back of the lots, along Skyline Drive, adjacent to this property. Uh, I have personally been out and looked at this lot and that drainage swale is there to collect and divert runoff. So, it would not at all be uncommon that when you have a heavy rain, there would be water in that area. It's designed to do that. Again, we, it was stated that this lot is not part of and was not developed as part of, thus not subject to any HOAs of either of the two subdivisions that are adjacent to it on each side. There was discussion about placing the building in the back portion of the lot. That would further impact, uh, Mr., is it Peters that spoke last? Was that, the gentleman who spoke last? It would impact them more dramatically than the current reorientation that they proposed after your first meeting. Additionally, if the building were reoriented to a north-south position and moved close to the existing structure, that would force the access doors to be facing the homes, which would, in my opinion, be more impactful on those homeowners. This orientation minimizes any disturbance to the homeowners that are on the east side of this property. Uh, Mr. Henigan and Mr. Peters, I believe it is. The questions about the French drains, their orientation, their specific location are all subject to your zoning approval and the development of the building by the builder. The placement of the doors will necessitate those locations, the lay of the land, the size and structure of the building. So, at a zoning meeting, it would be impossible to give you an accurate or even a reasonable location for each and every one of those drains. It's a function of the building and the site, which you, you won't know until you determine, until you determine what, how you're going to allow them to orient the building. Those were the high points of what I heard and what I thought were relevant to zoning issues.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Do we have any additional staff report from all that we've heard?
Mr. Cho ran the numbers on the roof. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
It would be about twenty feet tall to the peak. A minimum of twenty-two, based on a ten-foot, I guess, interior height. Right.
All right, thank you.
I would also point out a couple of things. One, I mentioned it during my presentation, but I think, you know, after all we've heard tonight, especially with the French drains, it would probably be worthwhile to add a condition for an engineering review as part of the building permit review process. Yeah, that's all I've got.
Any additional comments from the board? Go ahead, Matt.
So, I'm, I'm still looking at the accessory structure that I guess is now somewhat permanent because they poured concrete in it. So, I think whether or not they're asking for a four thousand, five thousand, eight thousand, it's a major variance either way, right? I think two accessory structures is a little bit, you know, there's some give and take here. So, my, my suggestion would be if they want the four thousand, which they're requesting, then that accessory shed has to go. I don't think you can get four thousand plus six hundred. Then again, I mean, like, I guess they could apply for five thousand, eight thousand. Doesn't matter. Right now, they're requesting for four thousand. That would hopefully center it. We can send that to council. They can do what they want with it. But honestly, I think, yeah, if that doesn't happen, then it's in their right to attach it to their building and obstruct their own view if that's what happens. So, if they really are tied to a four thousand-square-foot structure, it's either gonna be attached to their building or they're gonna have to give up that accessory shed.
I agree.
Anyone else on the board have any comment?
Go ahead, Charles.
Well, if you took that shed out and you centered it, according to my math, you'd have forty-two and a half feet on both sides of the building. You'd have forty-two and a half feet to the west, forty-two and a half feet to the east. I mean, that to me seems like the best solution, uh, if we're gonna pass something. I, I just think it's just too much, myself.
Go on, Adam.
I was gonna say, I think that that seems reasonable, what you were saying, Matt, about the fact that we already have an accessory structure there. They want a new one. They've given a very good case as to why the new one is well-suited. I personally buy the, you know, agree to the argument that this is an appropriate size, given the fact that, for a variance, given the fact that the lot is so large. But I, I, I see it as why not, why have two accessory structures if you already have one? So, and I think that it would make sense to have it centered. So, I think that would be a reasonable compromise, um, variance.
Thank you, Adam. Anything else?
Go on, Charles.
Do we have the ability to do that?
Yeah, I would ask the applicants if they were amenable to something like that. I would also point out that you guys have the power to allow for a lesser variance. So, if, if you wanted to entertain the idea of them keeping the existing shed and allowing for a smaller, uh, second accessory building, that would also be within your power.
My question is, either way, above a thousand square feet, it's still a major variance, right?
Correct.
Does the applicant wish to come forward again? Do you have any response to what has been said here by various board members regarding the, the already existing accessory structure?
Yeah, so, the already existing accessory structure is what is normally mandated okay from the house, having half of that square footage. So, that was built from the original design. Uh, the purpose of this was to get additional square footage so that we could store the cars. We can go a little smaller, but not too much because then that would defeat the whole purpose. Um, the one thing I do wanna kinda state is that if, uh, it was, said that we could attach to the house. If we attach to the house, we would then have the opportunity to attach all the way to the back of the far field and go as far as we wanted, correct? So, that's why we're looking at, this is less disruptive for the entire, um, community of what they're looking at. And one of them, and then that structure would be higher because it then can be the size of the house, if I'm not mistaken. So, then that would be higher and go the entire distance of that entire yard, which we are allowed to do. This was our compromise to keep the area still in a pristine-looking area and to not disrupt the neighborhood that much. So, I understand that it seems large. But if you, right now, we have cars in two buildings. And that's was the purpose when we bought this, is seeing the opportunity to build a large garage to put all the cars in. Does that help?
So, go on, Charles.
So, basically, you're against removing that barn-stable area as a compromise?
I feel at this point, we've compromised quite a bit by going from five to ten. We've been trying, we compromised in the layout of how we designed it. If it comes down to no variance versus a variance, you know, that's up to you as far as what you'll allow.
What, what would your objection be to moving your structure to the center line of the property if you kept your accessory building that you have now, but backing it up on the land that you just have is like a grassland? So, you move it back far enough that you could get in your accessory, your current accessory building, but it would be farther back, other than that you can't see it from your house for security purposes?
Yeah, and then it would block more of the neighbor's view that keeps coming up.
It'd be forty-two feet away from the neighbors instead of ten.
Oh, 'cause, but it, you're talking about this way, correct?
No, that would be fifty-seven and a half feet if you did it that way. I'm talking about just keeping it like you have it here, but figuring out where it would need to go so you could, you could get into your accessory building that you have now. But it would be, the front of the building would be behind that whole building.
Okay.
So, you'd have forty, forty-two and a half feet on each side of the ends of the building, towards the west and the east.
Okay, so it'd be directly behind there? Yeah. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
It would probably, yeah, I don't know how much of the accessory building, what do we got here? Is that, is that like thirty-five by twenties what we think that building is?
Um, it's twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty. And the thirty is the...
The length, the...
That'd be the east-west, east-west, yeah. So, you got seventy, eighty, yeah, ten. Yeah, so, I mean, you'd have to move it to where, uh, part of your west of the big building would be behind your accessory building a little bit. But not, uh, if you're visualizing that.
Yeah. And that would be a little bit additional in cost from the utilities. But if we can still maintain the structure and the structure we're applying for, we can put it behind the building.
You'd have to tear down the fence, I think.
We're have to tear down the fence and there's a row of bushes and trees. And in full disclosure, now, the folks that came up, now it's gonna be their view.
Well, it's gonna be somebody's view, no matter what. But in... Well, it's going to be somebody's view, no matter what, but instead of ten feet, it's going to be forty-seven feet. If, if that's what, we can come to an agreement.
I can agree to that. I'm, yeah.
Did you have, go ahead, Matt.
I guess if that's the case, and you want to build to attach to your house, I know you can build something as massive as you want. And I guess, I'm a gambling man, I'll call the bluff. It makes my zoning board roll much easier, I can reject it. So I can, if you want to build a ten thousand, fifteen thousand square foot structure, then you're going to have more problems with building safety, I think, and drainage. So I'm, I'm for rejecting it now.
Do we have something else you wanted to say?
So-
My comment is, if there's no compromise on double accessory structures, then, then I guess, you know, it, it's no point to approve a variance, since the alternative is to basically build as big as you want on that lot. It's not our role to decide that anymore, it's building safeties. And I think a fifteen thousand square foot structure, if you choose to build it, you're going to have a pond in the back.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead, Adam.
Would it be agreeable for me to make a motion?
Adam, is your mic on, sorry?
Thank you, sorry about that. Would it be agreeable for me to put forward a motion so that we can discuss specifics then, and have then, after discussing specifics, have an up or down? Sort of based on what we've been discussing, because I feel like we've come to sort of a final point here. Or does anybody else want to say something before the forward motion?
I don't have any problem with that.
I move to forward case ZBA dash twenty twenty-two dash major dash oh five to city council with a recommendation of approval within, with the following conditions. One, the garage will generally conform to the revised site plan as shown in, scratch that. The, the garage will generally conform to the design plan as shown in exhibit G. Two, that the city engineer will be consulted on the project. Is that the right way to put that, staff?
I would say engineering review as part of the building, building plan review process.
That, that, that an engineering review will be required as part of the building plan process. And three, that the potential Morton building design be located at a midpoint within the lot, to be located anywhere between the house and the back of the property.
Midpoint of the building at the midpoint.
The midpoint of the building at the midpoint of the lot.
Can we simplify that and say centered on the lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it'll be centered on the lot. So if the applicant wishes to keep their current structure in this, with this proposal, it would have to go someplace else, other than where the current structure is. If they wish to tear down the current structure, they could keep it approximately where it is on the plan. That's my reasoning.
You got all that?
Does it make sense?
Yes, I think I have that. Thank you.
All right.
So I'll, I'll seek a second for that, if that all made sense.
Okay, it's been so moved, is there a second to that?
Say it again.
Okay.
Thank you, okay. No, I'll, I'll say it again. I, I move to forward case ZBA dash twenty twenty-two dash major dash oh five to city council with a recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, that the garage will generally conform to the submitted visual as shown in exhibit G.
Do we want to attach that condition? Does that make sense, based on where you're at in the design process? If they choose to add siding, you know, wood siding or vinyl siding, I believe staff would consider that to be general conformance. When you say general conformance, I assume like the garage doors.
Right, when I say general conformance, I mean the garage doors and the, the shape of the structure.
Excellent, perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for that, ask for the clarification. Two, that the building be subject to an engineering review from the city. And three, that the garage be centered on the property somewhere between the house and the back of the lot.
Now we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded. I, in calling for a vote, this being a major variance, to be forwarded on to the city council, it has to be approved by a major, or not a majority, um, what do you call it? By three-fourths, which I believe with five here will require three votes in affirmance. So- Or four?
Four.
I'm bad with math, you should never let me do any math. It requires four votes to be forwarded on. If it does not receive four votes, then it will not be forwarded on for approval. So just to be clear to the members of the audience, this would not be the final approval. If it does get four votes, it just would go to the city council for further review. With that-
Charlie, Harvey, if this is defeated tonight, it will not go to city council.
No, I, I said if, if it got the necessary votes, it would go. If, if not, then it would not go.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Charles.
Okay, so we've heard a lot of objections, we've heard the plain, the reasoning for this. I think that this is about as good a compromise as we can get out of this, to send it to the council for the final decision. So I guess I will vote for this.
Hearing nothing else.
Can you clarify that last section, so the, they're allowed two accessory structures if they choose to move it in between?
So right now, the way this request is written, they are requesting an additional accessory structure up to four thousand feet. So that being said, that's my, what my proposal allows for is, you want that, that's fine. You have to center it in the lot, side to side, it has to be centered. So you either move it, move it someplace so it's not, you know, touch, you know, so that, you know, either move it back probably, so you're not destroying your trees, behind the existing structure, or demolish the existing structure, if you want it right then, in that place. That's basically the proposal. But I think, I feel like that is the compromise that allows for the fact that this property is not part of the subdivisions. It is large enough to allow for, I think reasonably allow for a variance that would allow for a garage this big, and yet still place the structure far enough away from any neighboring properties to not be as much of a nuisance.
Are we ready to call this for vote? I believe, I believe we are. So, roll call, please.
Uh, Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Matt Cho?
No.
Adam Rouge?
Yes.
Charles Wormbrunn?
Yes.
Harvey Welsh?
Yes. That receiving the necessary votes, it will be forwarded on to the city council for their review and consideration at the meeting of-
This will go to committee of the whole first, on October third, and then potentially city council on the tenth.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to all who have come forward to be heard.
I guess we get to keep these, I'll take them and shut them down. He should have a garage this clean.
He should. At this time, we are prepared for new public hearing. So I will call for hearing ZBA twenty twenty-two major dash oh six. A request by Matthew Usher on behalf of Crispin Auto for a major variance to allow a ten-foot, four-foot by eight-foot freestanding sign four feet from the front property line at ten-ten Cunningham Avenue in the B-three general business zoning district. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, you get to hear from me again. All right. This is a request by Julian Crispin, Julio Crispin and Matthew Usher for a major variance to allow a ten-foot tall, thirty-two square foot freestanding sign four feet from the property line at ten-ten Cunningham Avenue. Staff finds that the case meets three of the six variance criteria. However, based on what we have at a staff level and then what was provided to us in a variance application, we've decided that there is insufficient evidence to determine whether or not the requested variance is necessary to increase the visibility of the site. Staff recommends, based on that, staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals deny the requested major variance. This is a location map of the property. It is located on the east side of Cunningham Avenue, north of Kerr Avenue, and the applicants purchased the property in 2014. It was formerly used as a gas station and is now the Crispin Auto Sales and Export Shop. The business does not have a freestanding sign. There is a small wall sign on the property that is about ninety feet from the property line. The requested variance would allow the applicants to install a ten-foot tall, four-foot by eight-foot freestanding sign four feet from the property line. The zoning ordinance requires freestanding signs to be at least fifteen feet, or fifteen feet from public rights of way if the sign is taller than eight feet. The sign would be four feet from the public right of way on the east side of Cunningham Avenue, which would be a seventy-three percent reduction in the requirement. So a major variance is required to allow the request. This is a zoning map of the property. It is zoned B-three general business. The adjacent properties to the north, south, and east are zoned B-three general business, and the adjacent properties to the west, across Cunningham Avenue, are zoned B-three and R-three, single and two-family residential. Nearby are other auto sales and service shops, a motel to the north, and an HVAC service building to the east. Got a couple of site photos. This is from across the street. So looking east, you see the Crispin Auto building and property. This is looking northeast. There is a billboard on the property to the north. The Manor Motel sign is referenced in the staff report. It is pretty much on top of a shed. I believe the maximum, or the height of that was also mentioned in the staff report. This is looking north as well. There is a four-foot tall front yard fence on that property. This is looking south. The PDR Automotive Building has a one-story building that is basically up to the property line, and then a two-story building behind that one. And there's also a freestanding sign on that property. This is from the Crispin Auto site looking south. And this is another aerial. The applicants request the variance to reduce the required setback of the sign, as there are obstructions on the adjacent properties that block the visibility of Crispin Auto. The neighboring property to the north has a four-foot tall fence and sign that encroach into the required front yard. And the property to the south has a building and sign that encroach into the required front yard. When traveling north on Cunningham Avenue, the existing encroachments block the visibility of the site and building. The applicants state that there is, is currently a safety issue, because customers trying to enter the site are frequently unable to see the lot until they've already passed it. The applicants therefore request a reduction in the required sign setback from fifteen feet to four feet to increase the visibility of their sign and site for people traveling along Cunningham Avenue. The proposed sign would be smaller and shorter than the maximum allowed height, area and height for the, for a sign in the B-three district. These are just a few obliques. You can see the encroachments on the neighboring properties to the north and south that block the visibility of this site. And this is looking south, sort of. So we ran some, and just as a disclaimer, these are all estimates, we ran some visibility measurements to see where the setbacks of proposed signs would be visible from along Cunningham Avenue. And this is definitely not a perfect science, this was done using oblique software. The applicants will be able to explain how the encroachments affect the property a little bit better than these show. The sign in blue would be the, the proposed sign with the variance. The sign in pink would be a shorter sign with an eight-foot setback, and the sign in yellow would be a taller sign with a fifteen-foot setback. So in yellow, it could be up to sixteen feet tall. In pink, it could be up to eight feet tall. And the blue one is the proposed sign with the variance. And this is a site plan. You on that?
So both the pink and the, uh, yellow are allowed?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the site plan as submitted by the applicant. I'm going to run through the variance criteria real quick. Staff finds that the variance request meets three of the six variance criteria. So the first one being, the subject property is not subject to special circumstances. The neighboring property to the north has a sign and a fence, and the property to the south has a building face and sign that encroach into the required front yard. When traveling on north Cunningham, or when traveling north on Cunningham Avenue, the existing encroachments block the visibility of Crisp, of the Crispin Auto site and building. However, staff feel it is unclear whether or not a permitted sign would be visible from Cunningham Avenue, so this criteria does not weigh in favor of or in opposition to granting the variance request. The variance may serve as a special privilege. So much of Cunningham Avenue was developed before the current sign regulations were adopted and enforced, so there are several legally non-conforming signs along the corridor. As a result, the subject property is blocked by encroachments into the required front yards to the north and south. However, the zoning ordinance would allow for a freestanding sign up to eight feet tall when located at least eight feet, eight feet from the property line. It is undiscernible whether or not a permitted sign could be seen from Cunningham Avenue. Staff feel that this criteria does not weigh in favor to, in favor of or in opposition to granting the variance. And that was displayed by the visual before this one. This criteria is met. The situation was not created by the petitioner. The property has been without a freestanding sign for over fifty years, since before the owner purchased it. According to the applicant and the historical aerial photos, the adjacent properties have signs, fences, and buildings that encroach into the required front yard, and they have encroached for over forty years. The encroachments are legally non-conforming and block the visibility of the subject property. Staff feel that this criteria weighs in favor of the variance. The variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood for much of the reasons that have already been stated. The freestanding side would not, would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, as the other neighboring properties have signs, fences, or buildings that encroach into the required front yard. This area of Cunningham is characterized by auto sales and repair businesses, many of which have legally non-conforming signs close to the property lines or public rights of way. The proposed sign would be smaller than the signs on the adjacent properties, located four feet from the property line, and would not block any of the surrounding properties. Staff feel that the requested variance would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and weighs in favor of granting the variance. Couple more. The variance will not cause a nuisance, once again, for much of the reasons that have already been stated. The variance would allow for a ten-foot tall, thirty-two square foot sign to be installed four feet from the property line. The proposed sign would be entirely on the applicant's property and would not block the existing signs on adjacent properties. Staff feel that the requested variance would not cause a nuisance to adjacent properties and weighs in favor of granting the variance. And finally, the variance does not represent the minimum deviation. That being said, a smaller sign would be, a smaller sign or a shorter sign would be permitted on this property without a variance, and there's no evidence to support that a reduced setback would increase the visibility of the proposed sign. Staff feel that this criteria weighs in- Staff feel that this criteria weighs in opposition of granting the variance request. This is a photo of another one of Crispin's freestanding signs on a different property, just for reference. All right. So the zoning board of appeals has the has the following options on the requested major variance. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or deny the variance request. If the zoning board elects to do so, they should articulate finding supporting its denial. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals deny the variance. Further evidence from the applicant should be provided to substantiate the variance request, and they are here tonight to defend their case as well. I can answer any questions for staff. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff?
Is the four feet like a sign has a pole or a structure? Is that to the poles? Or is it to the edge of where the actual sign would be?
That is measured to the closest part of the sign, so in this case it'll be the sign frame. The pole, and I'll pull up those site plan real quick. I believe the measurement to the pole is eight feet.
Okay, so.
Yes, go ahead, Charles.
And it's measured from the sidewalk?
From the property line, which is essentially the sidewalk in this case.
Okay, so the.
So it's it's in the it's in their asphalt parking lot would be in that?
Yeah, I'll pull up. So, and like I said, there is there's not a current freestanding sign on the property, and as far as I could tell, there's never been a freestanding sign on the property. If they installed one four feet from the property line, it would be right about here on the existing pavement, yes.
And just to clear the the sole reason, that number six in your summary of findings, sole reason to not approve is that you think that this there's no evidence that a deviation is necessary? Is that it? Sorry.
I don't know if I would say that's the sole reason. I would say that is the the most substantial reason. A shorter sign with the same area would be permitted eight feet from the property line, so not with the same setback, but with a slightly larger setback would be permitted by right. And because there is no freestanding sign on the property now, there isn't really evidence to point to and say, oh, that wouldn't be visible from Cunningham Avenue. We really just don't have a ton to go off of other than, you know, obliques and measurement.
Got it.
Anything further? Thank you, Kent. Would the applicant like to be heard?
Uh, yes, please.
Please come forward. Sign in. So if he gets finished, take a break. We could do that right. Yes, if you don't mind, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, no worries.
All right, we're prepared to resume. The applicant is here. You may proceed.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Julio Crispin. I own a small business here called Crispin Auto LLC. It's the one that she showed you pictures of. We have, we originally rented the property in 2015. We found that it was a just kind of as a test to make sure that we weren't overcommitting for our growth. In 2015, we we moved our operation, our sales operation to that to that location and have pretty much relied almost exclusively on online marketing for most of our business. Unfortunately, you know, we've we've kind of hit that wall of growth because of not completely synonymous with that sign issue, but we're small. We're it's a small property, so we have to capitalize on every square inch of it, and and that's definitely not your problem, right? That's that's my problem, and my my job here is to find a way to maximize what we can do in this location. We've been here now for seven years in that location. We bought it at the end of 2015. We invested in the building, renovated it. It used to be a, from what I understand, historically was a Clark Gas Station, then it was another gas station, and then finally, I think somebody, the person I purchased it through, had to shut down as a gas operation and then spent thousands and thousands of dollars for a EPA remediation, all that stuff, and then it just sat. And it sat, I think, for what looks like on history images about four years before we rented it out and turned it into what essentially became today. We plan as a business to stay in Urbana. We inevitably own our success to the community and the support of the of Urbana and Champaign and campus and all those things, so we 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 understand how valuable that location is to us, and and we plan to essentially keep it as as good as we can and or can afford to. Our mission as a business, obviously, is to be successful. That's our number one mission. Fortunately, success in a in a tight-knit community is synonymous with honesty and integrity, and it's worked. We have only grown since we've moved here. We we have now an operation in Rentool as well that we essentially have almost exclusively to to alleviate the space in Urbana. So we so Urbana's operations are just as streamlined as possible, which is essentially sales. We have a full-service operation in Rentool that that essentially does all of our, you know, tough, hard groundwork so that in Rent in Urbana, we can have, you know, our sales lot, all the pretty cars, all the all the nice stuff, and then it's worked. This this business structure is is definitely growing. But here we we present you with this issue that we hope we can we can find a compromise with. I want to first start with showing you here's kind of what what we see is what the property once used to be. This is an image I found on Google Maps of it back in 2007. You know, it had a pretty, pretty large-sized structure here that I think allowed for more visibility or something regarding that subject because, you know, you if you see it compared it to the size of the cars, it was probably, I don't know, twenty, twenty-something-foot building from, you know, around the roof line with a sign and colors and kind of got the attention. That kind of that worked until obviously it didn't. Then this was this was what it was in 2012. I'm not sure what these two cars are there for, but this is this is how I got the property. 2015 came around, I I rented it out, and this was 2015. Kind of dolled out the office, painted it, cleaned it all out. 2016, we kind of, you can kind of see that our operation is doing is doing pretty good. I didn't know really how things worked in Urbana or anywhere, really. I was twenty-six at the time and decided I'm going to put this little sign here, and obviously, it it didn't pass. I was told to take it down, and we took it down, and we lost all our business. No, I'm just kidding. This is just a different time of the year. We sold our inventory. This is, you know, usually our most of our inventory is in January, February, so, you know, this was later in the year, so things are a little thinner. We're building back up for 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 our heavy season. So that was kind of just letting you know how we how we got to where we are now. Today, we we have a business here that operates or employs seven people who are honestly the the bread and butter of what Urbana is. They they show up, they work, they hustle, they party. I mean, it's it's a good community, and it works. Here we have essentially what we're up against. This is a video of what it's like to go forty miles an hour, which is the speed limit, going towards north on the east side of the road. Here you see PDR. So right here, you see Manor Motel, you see PDR, and this is where we're we would be allowed to put a sign. If you can see there on the right side, right here, that is the sign that we are legally allowed to put now. It is the setback, it's the the measured, I think it was currently given wrong, eight feet from the property line at the at the frame, the outer frame of the sign.
Correct. I believe this one's eight feet tall and eight feet from the property line, measured to the closest part.
Yeah, so this is the closest we can get at this at this regulation. If you kind of take a look with me at what it looks like coming up from the entry of the, this is one of the one of the driveways to the cemetery, you can see PDR from there. I mean, this is, we're talking about, I think it was a thousand fifty-three feet away, you can see the PDR sign. The first instance that I believe we can see that sign, the sign where Crispin Auto is actually visible, as we move forward, move forward, move forward, still no sign is visible, right around maybe here, and you can kind of start seeing the side of the sign. So here's a good place to kind of pause and show you. We would be kind of at the end of this driveway before you can, yeah, right, right about there is like when you can actually see that you would be able to see the whole sign. That distance from my driveway to the entry of this driveway is a hundred and thirty feet, right? So you're going forty miles an hour, fifty-nine feet per second, and it would require you two-point-two seconds to be able to see the sign, recognize the sign, and come to a stop till you can pull into the into our driveway. This is where we want to make an argument is anything we can achieve here to alleviate that kind of drastic abrupt interruption to traffic. We are having major issues with finding the building, people just slamming on their brakes, and we get this according effect where they're kind of, they know their GPS is telling them it's here somewhere, and so they stop, go, stop, go, and then you get all this crazy traffic trying to, you know, get people speed up, they slow down, and then you get that, just people really pissed off, really. But I took a an image here from online that kind of describes what the dynamics would be of of trying to stop a car at forty miles an hour. So if you were to recognize that that sign at forty miles an hour at a distance of a hundred and thirty feet, you know, you would slam on your brakes, and you would be at three hundred and sixteen feet. That's how long it would take you to actually come to a stop from sixty. This is from sixty-five. So because everybody speeds anyway. No, I'm just kidding. That's, this is actually one that's more accurate to forty feet. So here you have forty forty miles per hour. Said it takes forty-four feet to recognize. That's reaction to distance. That's like just your brain assimilating, hey, I am, I see the sign. That takes forty-four feet. Then you have eighty feet, that is car braking distance at a maximum ideal conditions, right? We're talking about a a person who's like really stomping on the brakes. You still get a hundred and twenty-four feet, which I get it, that gives them five feet, but you're giving, you know, that's that's kind of a hit or miss. We got we got snow, we got rain, we got other other variables that affect that as well. But that this is like as best slam on the brakes, being able to come to a full stop. And then you have this semi, because we get a lot of, since we're a dealership, you know, we we get trucks that are delivering vehicles constantly on on Cunningham. Now, these guys are causing the worst, probably one of the hardest circumstances here is they they're trying, they're on a schedule. These guys are dropping off cars all over the place, sometimes across the street even. They're finding this stuff, they're slamming on the brakes, people are trying to keep up with traffic, there's very little visibility around them, and then we we are, we kind of always come out, we're showing cars, and then we see this crazy havoc happening, and we're trying to kind of deter the customer from seeing the chaos that's going there. And it's not like it's daily, but it's just a matter of time before something more more dramatic happens, and and I would I would be not, I wouldn't be prudent if I don't act on on any kind of resolution that that fits, you know, what you guys think I need. So then we go to this picture here. So this is the view from the edge of the sign as it would look like if you were on the very edge of the sign looking out to the south side of Cunningham, right? So this is the wall that is PDR. They have a wall built up to their property line, so they are on the sidewalk, essentially. Well, not on it, obviously, but up to it. So this doesn't allow me to even see traffic that is on that intersection of Kerr, which is only like two blocks away. Now, going north, it's not as, I would say, as urgent because you're on the opposite side of the road, so you're on the west side, and you can, you know, you can see that you could probably see the sign, say, I don't know, three hundred, four hundred feet away. Gives you a little more of a of a notice that, you know, you're expecting or or you're going to be turning into into Crispin Auto. And then this is the view that we would have if we had a sign on the edge of this here, which would allow us, obviously, now you can see the PDR sign, you can actually see the whole sidewalk, and you can see the intersection now. This is still the edge of the sign. I know this is, this may not solve all of our problems, but inevitably, it would definitely alleviate some of the of the of the issues of of visibility. Let's see, so we have, and I think I had one more view. Oh, so this is my Rentool lot where we operate the bigger the bigger operation. Now, of course, this has a setback, but look at, look at to my south, I have Farm, and to the north, you couldn't really see here, but I have another huge business operation, but they have nothing built up to the of the top property line, so visibility here is fantastic. Now, this is a, this is the sign that is that would be allowed here, but it would not fit in any way, shape, or form the 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 cult or, I want to say, the characteristics of that street. It would just be a pole that sits like sixteen, what's the, is it sixteen feet? I'm sorry.
It could be fifteen, or it could be sixteen feet tall with a fifteen-foot setback.
Yeah, so, I mean, something like this would do me no good because it would still be set too far in for the for anybody to see over the over the PDR building. See the PDR building. So this is the PDR sign, so I would just literally be right behind it. My proposal here is that if we zoom in, we would have a sign that would be below this sign in front of this sign, so it would be somewhere around right here. Right? So you would have a sign, so here's the sidewalk, the sign would be about, I think at the base was going to be eight feet.
Eight feet to the pole, four feet to the sign frame.
Yep, to the sign frame and six feet from the bottom. So it would still be be visible. I think it would it would serve its purpose, and it would definitely not block either of the of the neighboring signs or affect their their signage at all. I think, I thought I had a a letter here on here. I do, I did bring it, I thought I had it scanned in here. Oh, is it? Oh, here it is. So this is PDR, the owner of PDR, his name is John Marshall. He says, hello, my name is John Marshall, I'm the president of PDR Automotive Incorporated, located at one oh oh eight North Cunningham Avenue in Urbana. I have been president of this location for more than twenty years. Our neighbor's directly to the north, Crispin Auto is applying for a variance for signage. I personally think that them getting a new sign is not only beneficial for them, but also for me. We have multiple customers pulling into my lot trying to locate Crispin Auto. The visibility is poor due to the setback in of their building. The PDR office and the Manor Motel act as a blind to potential customers driving north or south down Cunningham trying to locate their business. Obviously, any increase in business is also an increase in sales tax, which is good for the city. Thank you for your time and consideration in the matter. Yeah, the taxes thing, I think, was kind of too much, but you get the point. He's trying to help me out. But we do, you know, I understand his frustration. We had cars dropped off at our lot that were for his customers, and he had to call a tow truck and get it moved from my lot to him. Again, this is cost that the customers will not cover because it wasn't it wasn't their fault, you know, they hired a tow company. Same with me. Customers come to, a car company drops off a car, and they, more likely than not, is they drop it off across the street. They assume that we are a an accessory lot to Cunningham Motors, which is, you know, or CU Motors, which is the bigger business, kind of the big dog when it comes to used car sales. They're they're, you know, and they have almost, I think, like five hundred and something linear feet in front of their lot, so they visibility is fantastic. We're trying to do something with an otherwise useless, maybe not useless, but difficult things to do with a lot like this. We turned it into something that that is is successful. Even at its worst, I think we're very happy with what we've achieved in this in in the last seven years, but, you know, I think we can make it better. I think I think a sign would make a big difference. I don't think we're we're asking for an absurdity either, like we're compromising with a smaller sign as opposed to the the monster sign that would also be super expensive, but it would be smaller, closer to the road, and it would be, you know, it would be even similar to the to the sign that PDR be similar to the, to the sign that PDR has, just, you know, flatter dimensions, so that they don't, it doesn't go as much tall as it goes over, so that it can be visible. I think that pretty much covers any, any of my points, I'm sure there'll be some questions and whatever you guys need.
Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Charles?
Is it, is it a metal sign?
It will be a sign that will look essentially exactly like this sign. It will be lit, our intentions are to have it, and this will all obviously materialize once we understand what dimensions we're actually allowed, ultimately, once we compromise. I think that it'll be exactly like this, very simple, this has worked in Urbana, or sorry, in Rentool, four feet by eight feet. It will be, more than likely it will be a metal aluminum sign with a vinyl finish, just like this one. It was very cost-effective, and it looks, I mean, it's been up there now, that, that operation there has been under four years, and it looks new. So the sign is new, the, the frame is not, so I, I think that's probably the route we wanted to go.
It's not subject to easily, easily broken?
No, no, it'll be solid structure. I think there's already a lot of standards to, to signage, as, as I understand it. So no, it won't, it will not be like a wooden, I don't intend to do anything, I, I want to do it right, especially if, if, if we do it, I want to do it once. I don't want to, I don't want to deal with other issues, but yes, that's our, that's our intention. One thing I forgot to, to kind of reiterate is, in the, in the request to deny from the staff, one of the, their main point, and I wanted to address that, was that I couldn't, they don't believe that in an extra variance to what they allow would help. Like there is no argument that even closer to the street would make any difference past the, their, their suggestion that we go up to, what, I'm sorry, what was the recommendation?
The eight-foot setback is the minimum setback that you could have by right.
Okay, so their, their, in, in their denial, it says that they don't believe that it would make any additional benefit. I can see that from their, the angles that they, that they took, but as, as you said, those were really, there weren't a practical representation of the situation, in the sense that like, if you see, and I took a still shot of, of what it actually looks like while you're, while you're driving there, thought I did, but, can pull this up. There's other things that you just can't tell from aerial view that are also affecting. So, right here is where you can kind of, well, let me get closer, so you, okay, so this is where we're at. This is where you can see the sign, the full shape of the, of a sign that would be within the specs of what's allowed right now. We're proposing to move this essentially as close as you guys allow us to the, our property line. In my opinion, in, in this scenario, it is an indisputable truth, that the closer you are to that, the more you will see it. In the, in the aerial view, I can understand, because you can't take into account all the other things, like this, this roof here, this roof pitch here, things like this, like, those are little things that play a big role in visibility there. And then you go back a little bit more, and you're, you're blocking it with that pole, you have, not only do they have that sign, but they have other signs underneath it, and so, see, it starts to disappear on you, and this is where we're at, that we're 130 feet away. This is where I argue that there is just no logical expectation for somebody to get this right their first time. Our argument, or our, our method of describing our location is next to PDR, and that's, it's kind of like what we've managed to achieve for now. It's kind of embarrassing to tell somebody like, hey, you want service on your car, we're next to the very visible repair shop that's also on the same side of the road, but we're next to that, that little hole in between PDR and Motel, that's where we are. We do it, and it works, we're in different businesses, Marshall and I have, have, have coexisted now for the last seven years and never had any, any dispute. He's in a very unique, very, very specialized part of automotive repair, so it's not like we lose business to each other, so I'm not going to lie to you and tell you I'm hurting because he's taking all my business, that's not the case, we're, we're, we're fine with each other, it's just, it's inconvenient where we have customers coming for sales and end up in a repair shop bothering his employees, telling them, hey, we're looking for the car you had for sale. It's like, well, no, that's next door, oh, okay, you know, that's, sounds like a minor issue, but it's happening three or four times a day. To him, it's, it's significant, and to us, of course it is, you know, that's, it's, we want our customers to come with a, with no frustrations, right? I mean, that helps the sale, we don't want to come here trying to find the place and then argue with us about, you know, why is it so expensive? No, I'm just kidding. But yeah, so, you know, stuff like that, anything helps. So, any other questions?
Any other, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Yeah. You, you can sit her with you if you want.
Hello, everybody, my name is Jens Klingenberg, and this is my daughter, Yana, thanks for everybody being so patient, and she's running around a lot. So I am a, a customer at Crispin Auto, we're buying a lot of vehicles there for personal purposes and business purposes, and for us, or for me, and for my guys that I'm sending down there, it's sometimes an issue, because you're driving down there, and you're almost driving past the lot, because it's, it's so hard to see, even, even you know it's there, but you're constantly kind of like looking, was it here, was it there? And you're supposed to look forward, but you can't, because you're trying to find a spot. And it's, it's kind of like for me also, you know, having my, my little girl with me and stuff, kind of like, almost like a safety issue, because you can't focus on the street, because you have to constantly look, where was the lot again? And so, I can totally understand that those guys trying to put a sign up there, and, you know, not just improving their business, but also improving kind of like safety, because that's my concern. You know, when I send people down there and they're like, can't find it, or start looking, and, you know, especially when you come from north, you have to keep, keep looking, and then veer into the center lane, and then go back out, because it's still not here, and then go, it, so it's kind of like, really, it stops the traffic flow, so to speak, and especially also when you come from the south side, it's even harder, because it's right behind PDR, which the building is so, so close built to the sidewalk, that, that, it's just, it, there's just not a lot of visibility there. So, and I think it could improve, it just could, could improve safety, and also maybe his business purposes, to kind of like have a sign there where you can easily, you know, locate the business. I also, you know, I recommend his business to other people that I know, and I'm getting calls back, it's like, well, I drove twice down there, I can't find it, I, you know, there's PDR here, but I don't know, it's like, well, it's right next to it, and it's like, oh, I thought that was the parking lot for PDR, it's like, no, this is, this is, this is, so I can, I can understand that those guys, you know, trying to do some improvement over there, you know, for, for a couple of different purposes, so that's, 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 that's all I have. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you.
Other than that?
Are there any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in favor? Please come forward.
My name is Matthew Usher, I'm the business manager at Crispin Auto, I'm the one that actually filled out the application on behalf of Mr. Crispin. As a business manager there, I just wanted to see what state, what I see on a daily basis at the property there, with customers coming and going, I've driven past it myself, and I work there. When Ms. Trotter came to the property to actually meet with us there, I'm pretty sure she missed it as well. So there, there's little question that the, that the lot is not visible as it is. A couple other factors that you have to take into consideration when you're going down this road, is it's not just an open stretch of highway with no traffic. There's, at times of day, extremely high levels of traffic, as you all know, on Cunningham Avenue. Just past us, in front of the Manor Motel, there's a bus stop on the road right there. Across the street, on the west side, there's a bus stop over there. So not only is somebody coming down the road looking for our business, they're looking at the GPS on their phone, they're trying to find out where we are, and there's a bus stopping right in front of them, there's traffic weaving around, it's, it's pretty chaotic. I was coming down the road one day, that had happened to me, a bus had stopped, I saw that some cars were already in the lot, and as I drove by it, slammed on my brakes and managed to make it into the second entrance, and I work there every day. So visibility really is a, a serious issue. The other two things that, that I wanted to discuss were the, the proposed signs that would be compliant. One is a shorter sign, and a shorter sign eight feet back, we already have issues with the buildings on either side of us seeing traffic. If you're turning to the, to the south, coming out of our lot, then you've got that fence where the Manor Motel is, and you have to pull up past that fence to see to the right. If we have a sign that is low, it's going to block visibility as you're turning out of our lot into traffic as well. So that's one of the reasons that we wanted to do on, with the base six feet high, unless you're driving a monster truck, any car that you're in pulling out of our lot, you'll be able to see under the sign, it won't impede visibility at all. So a lower sign, in our opinion, actually hampers safety going, going in and out of our lot, and a higher sign set further back is going to be blocked, as you can see in that image, by PDR's sign, by their building, and the same thing coming from the north, it's going to be blocked by the Manor Motel's sign and that giant billboard that sits right, right next to our property. I, I can't tell you how many times I watched my own daughter drive past us last Friday, she was coming to meet me for something, and I just, I watched her drive past, and I called her, I said, sweetie, you just drove past us, well, where are you? And she ended up in, coming back this way, and then she pulled into PDR's parking lot, and she knows where I work. So, that's really all I have to say, if you have any questions for me as a business manager there, I'm all ears.
Are there any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor of, please come forward?
All right, I'm with Reynolds Towing, Crispin Auto and Reynolds Towing's had a pretty good relationship, probably the last four or five years, we've been doing most of it as local transporting. We try to get together where we can get it two at one time, use the flatbed, kind of save a little bit of money on both sides. As you guys know, employee shortage now, we're constantly having, revolving on the smaller end of employees, so we can always tell them, hey, Crispin Auto, next to PDR, go pick up these cars, take it here. Just actually, last week, we've had two complaints of us having trucks in there, heartbreaking last minute to swerve in. Not really his fault, not anybody else's fault, our drivers should be a little bit more secure, but in the flatbeds, we can't just turn around anywhere, so when you got the opportunity to go, you go. I can tell you, it's not only a safety issue of not being able to see them, it's also a financial issue, well, kind of a burden on them, because we charge them $45 every car, which is half a tow, to come move them from his lot to PDR. We've had a lot of customers request to go to PDR, not only on our end, but we've dropped in the wrong lot, our rookie drivers, or even competitor tow companies have dropped in Crispin's lot, or transporters have brought in, dropped over there, and we have to move around, and depending on who calls us, it's $45 a call, a car. So I can tell you, even though I've been doing this, and I've been working with Crispin Auto for years now, I still blow right past the place, I shouldn't say blow, but I still go past the place quite often, and have to go down to the Harbor Freight parking lot, turn around, come back, try to squeeze in there, get into the middle lane, all that stuff. And I think honestly, a sign that you guys are saying is allowed, would honestly prohibit you, as you, as Matt was saying, from PDR. I pull trucks in and out of PDR all the time. You look to the right, you can't see anything, you look north, you can't see anything, so them having that lower sign that is allowed would definitely cause more of a traffic issue for PDR's traffic coming in and out. So, that's pretty much what I had to say, and any questions for me?
Any questions? We've now heard from all persons present, so there are no persons present to speak against the proposed application. Does the presentation by Crispin now change anything from staff about evidence or lack of evidence?
I think the video footage speaks for itself, and I think it speaks more strongly than what we can, you know, show as an example on an aerial photograph. I, I'm not going to attempt to edit the criteria in my head right now, I think the three that are met were certainly met before tonight's presentation. I would say, take Mr. Crispin's presentation into consideration for your recommendation as well.
But the city recommendation is still denying.
Yeah, I mean, prior to this meeting, we've had internal discussions about the criteria and how they apply to this case. I wouldn't feel comfortable making a change on the fly.
I understand.
But like I said, I think Mr. Crispin's video evidence is strong and makes a case for their request.
All right, that, that clarifies, I just wanted to give you a chance to respond. Are there any additional comments from the board?
I guess I would agree with the video that was presented, and I read, I guess, the three that were, I guess, in opposition of approving the variance, and I think, after rereading that and seeing the video, I think I would probably, yes, I would probably move those into favor to, to, I guess, what do you call it, not in opposition?
All right, this time then, do we have any motion regarding this case?
I move that the zoning board of appeals approve ZBA-2022-major-06, and has presented to us today, and send it to the city council for further consideration.
Can I recommend a condition that the site plan is?
Please.
That the sign is in general conformance with the site plan? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. I, it's been so moved, do we have a second to that motion?
It's been seconded.
If there are any additional discussion, if not, then we're ready to call for a vote. And again, this being a major variance, I have my numbers lined up this time, it will require four affirmative votes to be forwarded on, this is going to council or to another?
This will go to the city council on October 10th.
All right, well, then it requires four votes for this to, four votes in favor for this to be forwarded on. So we're ready to call for the vote.
Joey and Chester?
Yes.
Matt Choak?
Yes.
Adam Roos?
Yes.
Charles Wormbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welsh?
Yes, that motion carries by the necessary votes to be forwarded on to the city council at their meeting of October?
10th.
10th. Thank you to all.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any old business?
I see nothing.
No?
No.
We have any new business?
None.
We have no audience anymore. Is there a staff report?
No.
Study session?
No.
Did I ask about something?
Yes, go ahead.
I was wondering, I know Champagne has talked a lot about ADUs, is that something that Urbana is also?
Is that something that Urbana is also chewing on?
What's, what is ADU?
An accessory dwelling unit? That's a really good question. That's something that I would recommend emailing maybe to the planning inbox to, at That is something too that could possibly align with certain other conversations, like mayor and council priorities that have been set this last year, or also future conversations with the conference of plan. And just as a quick, like, update to the conference plan, there's more conversations and community engagement being planned for the winter and spring, where there's, you know, going to be a housing section and talking about housing and affordability and housing alternatives and diversity of housing options. Accessory dwelling units, like garage apartments or an internal ADU would be someone, you know, being able to live in an attic or say, a basement, or turning a place into separate, like a building out of firewall in an existing structure, or just a detached, like a, the garage apartment, but as, as, you know, any, most architects would tell, it'd be, you know, it'd be a separate new structure that would be met for that.
It seemed like pre-COVID, we had to discuss a lot of, depending on the use, whether it was someone that was dying, we usually approved it, but-
Matt, can you talk into the microphone? I'm sorry.
I think pre-COVID, there were a lot of cases where they came up here, so it was either attic or an extension of a house. I think we had to approve based on certain requirements.
Or a garage has been turned into three apartments.
Most times, if it was a student dwelling, then we would-
From 2018 to 2019, there were five approvals from that, from Z B A for this conditional use for a second principal structure.
I remember one in southwest, southeast Urbana.
This is a second principal structure for housing.
That one was to allow what we were calling an attached duplex in the R2 zoning district. That also requires a conditional use permit.
And that's an attached, these are, the five that I just mentioned pre-COVID 19, the pandemic, are all R3 properties that would allow an attached second unit by right, but detached second unit, which is just, is kind of a structural difference, requires a conditional experiment.
Me neither.
I have a really fun list I can send you.
But I assume this new ADU conversation is going to clean a lot of that up?
There is currently no active ADU conversation in Urbana, but there are opportunities. Yeah. Yeah, there was an amendment in 2019 that was derailed by the pandemic for a text amendment to just take a look at R3 detached second principal use residential structures. And that ended up being removed from the final text of the zoning. Yeah, 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 so Race in Washington was one that was approved, and that one was-
That was the garage.
The garage apartment, and then there was a tree, that's what needed a major variance too as well. Yeah, yeah, it was for the applicant, their mother, they wanted to live next to their mother and-
There's one on Florida, just near Race, on the south side of the street.
Yes, they didn't actually end up moving it, and this is actually something that, you know, of course, every community across America deals with, as more and more communities are legalizing this, this diversity of housing kind of project to meet the affordable, affordability issues across America. These things are expensive to build in general. Housing is expensive to build in general. You know, you could build multi-housing, family housing, you could build a new single-family home that's a modest size, it's still very expensive. So like in Champagne, they've legalized it, but since, there has been no building permits for it because it's just, it is very expensive. It'd have to be a real labor of love for, you know, to put it in excess, something that would meet building and energy codes within, you know, certain modifications you could possibly make, like Champagne has made a couple of modifications to make these things a little bit more affordable to meet the housing.
There was something that was, like, parking- Washington Street, just near Race, and there was an accessory building in the back.
Yeah.
That wasn't a dwelling.
Are you thinking about like 10 years ago, kind of? Major variance for an accessory structure, but it was more of like a-
They built a new house in the front.
In the front, right, yes, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about. And that one actually has stipulation, that was a major variance that did get approved, but it has stipulations that eventually the person needs to, you know, remove that second house that they were living in in order to build the new house that was in the front. It's being used for storage as we speak. But it's not being lived in. Anywho.
We are adjourned.